Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For meeting here. The guy, uh, and next is the approval of the minutes from, uh, last meeting, number. I don't know what they were. I didn't see anything.
They make a motion we approve to December fourteenth. Twenty twenty-two minutes.
So it was a motion by Kristen, the second by Ted. Who approved the minutes of. Number fourteen, so all those in favor. Here. Uh, next is. Department report.
Nobody here today. Pete Farrell said he doesn't have anything new to report. Probably saw Dan's. He basically was just reporting, they've been busy, obviously, with the, with the last couple of weeks, they think.
They've been out a lot.
He was hoping to be here tonight, but he's, he's on his way to Cranberry Isle for that store that burned down on Cranberry Isle the weekend. He's doing investigation. In the ocean.
Now, should I say anything for? To read together? So I read this.
Sure, if you want to.
Yep, okay.
Actually, the bottom bit.
Said he had good intentions, but, uh. He had to go to Elsworth to catch a. Boat ride to Cranberry Island. Or the fire at the store and. I don't know, he said he'd taken a total of twelve fires this week. Only Wednesday, I don't know what.
I think he's referring to his business.
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly. His department head report is, uh, they've been extremely busy. Responding to a, a, a total of a hundred and ninety-seven calls for, uh, this year, twenty twenty-two. In the latest storm, firefighters responded to nine incidents that involved working nine hours straight. The previous storm firefighters responded to twenty-two calls. Total of thirty-one calls. For the two storms. Most of the calls were related to trees and power lines down across roadways. Uh, the latter storm, rainstorm, uh, involved a few washed out roads. And he just mentioned that he is working. With Justin on the, uh.
Um, all, all I have to say is that we're, we're working through. All the permitting for the Wilson Pond Culvert project, if we move ahead with that next year. Um, it looks like the window is going to be inconvenienced for the campground, so we're gonna have to see what we can do for that, because the only window, I think, that the army corps will let us dig in that stream is about between July and the end of September. So that's obviously in the middle of the air, uh, season, so I'm not sure. You know, what we can do to try to mitigate that, I'm not sure, but it, it may be an unpleasant. Situation for them for a period, we'll have to just see how that all.
To, to when, when in September?
It looks like the window is July one to September thirty. They haven't ruled on it yet, but that's. That appears to be what the engineer understands to be our window.
You might be able to sneak it in at the end of September. Maybe if it's, if it's a week-long project.
Yeah.
Without too much, you know, then they use the back door. The secret back door.
Would they? The, the Sanborn Road one, I think that project stretched out for like three weeks or more.
Oh, yeah, similar type of box culvert, yeah.
I know that when DOT does these same sometimes, they put incentives and they make them go faster, so I don't know, it may be something we want to consider. I mean, some kind of a bonus payment if they can get it done.
Peak season for that line of business ends with Labor Day, so.
Right.
There is a back way in. And there is a back way in, so maybe they could limp through September with. Less than optimal access, I don't know.
What's the choice, though? No road or no road?
You know, uncontrolled, or they want it.
Yeah.
Or the temporary crossing.
Yeah.
Which would be an added expense.
Maybe they want to pay for it.
Maybe.
As we know more, well. I have the contact over that. He seems like a very pleasant individual, the guy that's running that. Operation. He came in to visit me and everything, introduced himself, seems pleasant enough, so. I'll work with him.
You didn't follow down when you told them what, what, what you were thinking about?
No, he didn't, because he knows, you know, they've seen, you know, that the road's washing out and stuff, so I think for their own interest, they obviously want it fixed, but. He, he, he was hoping it wouldn't be during the season, of course, right? You know, I, I understand that.
Pretty hard to dig around here. Why? Yeah, January, September.
So, uh, on to slide board reports.
I just have one thing, um, the Cottrell Taylor Christmas baskets were, um. Completed again and distributed last week, um, just on a note, they were started in nineteen sixty-three by Henry Cottrell and. Charlene Kenwood. And. This year, there were fifty-three families, two hundred and twenty-two total people, including ninety-eight children. Received, um, Christmas baskets and they receive a meal. A complete meal and clothes and toys for kids and gift certificates for teenagers. There's about. Fifteen ladies that wrap and there's lots of husbands that help deliver them and. Dan Roy, um. Allows them to use his building for that and this year Lori Gifford, who's, um, the baskets and. Kind of since Charlene gave up. The. Running the baskets, this was her last year, so, um, that was a big deal that Lori's not doing it anymore, but she's passed the reins on to the next generation of. Ladies in town that worked up there and do that for Mondays. Starting, I think, in October, November, something like that, and then. Yeah, um, the Future Business Leaders of America help and National Honor Society help, um, work with the, the ladies getting the baskets together. And the Memorial School does a stuff the bus for the food, so. And of course, there's lots of donations from citizens and local businesses for those. It's a lot of work that goes into that. Lots of families are out for that.
I, I got a few calls about the, the roads in town over the last storm. I, I think Dan and the crew are working through some. Growing pains to figure out the best way to get things done and, um. Yeah, I think it's just gonna take some time for him to get adjusted and. And hopefully, I, I want Dan to be aware that it's okay to reach out to people, um, for help. Uh, you know, people in other towns. Um, we know he doesn't have years of experience, like a lot of the other public works directors had, um. And we need to make sure he is aware that he is. Uh, more than welcome to call other towns and say, hey, what, what is your plan for this storm? You know, how are you going to attack this and? Um, because it didn't go real smooth.
For over the rain.
Just no, no removal. Um, and the, the ice on Maple Street is an ongoing. Uh, continuous problem that I'm not sure what the solution's gonna be, but maybe between the homeowners and, and Dan and. We'll figure out something at some point, but definitely is gonna need to be addressed with all the money we spent down here. The sidewalks aren't even usable.
Yeah.
Because there's so much ice building up on them.
They were out there with the one ton yesterday, running on it, trying to break it out, but.
Yep. And, and, yeah, you start to get rid of it and the water pumps out of the houses and it's right back there the next day, so. An ongoing.
I had, I got a phone call from a resident on Maple Street. With. You know, just kind of touching base, because Dan had contacted them. And, uh. That, that particular household, they're working with an engineer to try and. Figure out a problem. Right, because. The sidewalk, it, the, the former sidewalk, the condition of it didn't really matter. If that's where the water went.
Right, right.
But now it does, and they get it. They want their, they want a nice sidewalk too. And they're, uh, some of the people on that road are. Spending big money to try and solve the problem, but it's gonna take a little time.
I'll, I'll give him, I give him that message. Check with other towns. This is, well, the snow was, uh. It was a real kind of a surprise, uh, more than what was predicted and. And of course, that heavy. Wet stuff. Yeah, I. And, but, but I know that, uh, the equipment that he, the new, uh. Sidewalk clean that worked well. There's a problem on Main Street between where the telephone poles are. And with the rain. Uh, that, there's a, uh. The, the ground must be really wet, like, uh, because right here on Academy Road, uh. Where the Cottrell School was, uh. It's, it's a huge. Uh, sheet of ice right there in the road that they're working on trying to. Which I've never seen before, uh. And, and I know that, uh. Down the road here too, there's. And I couldn't, I, uh. Uh, I couldn't find anything in our ordinance about. Uh, people. Pumping their cellars out. To the road. In our. The ordinance.
It may, that might be a question for Dave Shaw. He dealt with that quite a bit, I think. And he probably would know where to find it, but we did a project on Main Street across from the post office. Um, and that issue was discussed, that they had a pump that went towards the street. And we were told, it's like, no, there is an ordinance that, you know, here in town, you cannot discharge your wastewater into the street or public. Property, it's supposed to be maintained on your property. It's, for some properties, it's really, really difficult to do that without spending thousands of dollars putting in some kind of underground drainage or.
Yeah.
It can get very expensive to do.
This is Wrenge Bates.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's still something going on there.
I think it's up the street, I think it's the next house.
Places that have, uh, if you look at the bottom of the sidewalk, there's holes. And PVC pipes coming out of the base of the sidewalk where they're pumping right out onto the street, because I can. Read off who's pumping into the street from me walking, because I don't use the sidewalks and I have barely. Been able to walk in the breakdown lane in some places where, I mean, all the way up to, um.
There are a couple. There's a couple of places where it works okay, because the water goes on the street, goes six feet and it's in the catch basin.
Exactly.
So it doesn't go anywhere. It ends up in the catch basin, not that it's. No, you can't say it's okay for one person and not somebody else, but.
But there's quite a few of them.
Yeah.
One day I called, um, Winthrop Water, because I thought there was a line break. There was so much water coming out of the street. And they're like, oh, no, we know what you're talking about, and that's somebody's sump pump, and it comes out right there.
He got my annual letter from that Spirit of America. Award. People and, uh. Last year, I know we did the Masons, but, uh, and that Amaro. And of course, we, we never published the, uh. Oh, town report, so. Was her, sitting somewhere waiting. Uh, because we dedicated town report to them as well, to the Masons as well and Tan Amaro. And. So i- if you know of anybody. Who is our group that's deserving how they, who hasn't received. Your America Award previously. Think of them, think of somebody. But, and I can send you a list of people who've already gotten it.
Yeah, I'd like to see the list, um. That way we can. Start looking from there.
The CEO, i- i- in that letter we got from, uh, Steve O'Donnell. He said that we must. Have a CEO. So, uh, you have you it?
It's been posted. We haven't gotten any applications. Lori and I have been, I've reached out to all our neighbors to see if one of them is willing to at least issue building permits until we find somebody. And, uh, but this isn't, these aren't good weeks to be asking people anything, because nobody's working. So when we do, so when I hear a little bit like from. Like you suggested leads today, I did that right after you left, but I've already got an email into Jeff and Winthrop and Lori called Wales and. Reed Field and Wayne, they share a full-time person, so he doesn't have any availability.
Ernie Celester.
Well, he does the plumbing licensing, but I don't know if Ernie has the background to be able to issue building permits. Um. There's a lot of rules and regulations you need to know, and someone comes in and says, I want a permit to do this. You need to say, yes, you can do that, and no, you can't, and I'm not sure he's up on all the laws that would. And I don't know.
This is Bubek. That you have to know or not.
Uh, not necessarily. You need all that. It's more the town wouldn't. Yep. Yep, it's quite a bit to it.
But we're trying to find a temporary solution, but it's not easy. I mean, these people just don't exist. So we're just gonna try to find somebody nearby that will help us out, you know, maybe just be on call to issue building permits, you know, they could. Swing over here and I've, I've offered all of them, you know. I'll, I'll pay you outside of your normal hours, or I'll reimburse the community in which you live in, whatever, you know, how, how, however that works. If you're willing to do it, we'll, we'll figure out a way to do it. But I haven't heard back from anybody yet.
And we did hear from Text Tech about the. Their, uh, consent. Decree.
I heard from DEP.
Yeah.
And, and, and if any of you have any question, any additional questions from what I put in there that. Those two gentlemen's contact information and they, they are willing to talk to any, anybody and anybody about, um. Any concerns they have, whether they be residents or yourself or. Um, that's what they're there for.
Oh, you, you, you said that. What, what you read about?
Well, I, I actually got a copy of the consent decree, and this was back from, you know, late eighties or early nineties. Having some discussion over a different set of chemicals.
Right.
That sort of overlap with the PFAS stuff that is our concern today. And, uh. And, uh, what has become apparent is that Text Tech is. Definitely doing the right thing. Technically, the, the consent decree is about a different set of chemicals, so technically they could. Just say, oh, well, that's not, that's not part of the deal, right? But they are honoring the. Uh, intent of the consent decree. Um. Uh, the one question that is not really covered in the consent decree, um, is, uh, is the issue of. Uh. The flow pump that they use to try to control the. The movement of groundwater, so they're trying. This is a twenty, this is actually, I think it's like two or three of them. Um, that are constantly. Um, flowing water. Drawing it from the, the groundwater and sending it down Wilson Stream. And, uh, when they did, uh, the groundwater testing. Of course, they've got, you know. Hundreds of tests scattered around the neighborhood, uh, the highest. Test result was that flow pump. So the good news is the flow pump seems to be. You know, drawing fresh water into most people's, uh, residential wells. And, and that actually lowers the levels of contamination for those wells. The bad news is. Is that it's flowing the most contaminated stuff. Into Wilson Stream and then downstream and Annabask Cook, et cetera, et cetera. And so. Our next question is, okay, is there? Is there a standard? For safety for doing that, because they're already starting to find in Fairfield, for example. Um, signs that wildlife are now PFAS contaminated, because they live in a PFAS contaminated environment.
So it's not the chlorinated solvents that they were originally. Had the signed degree, the, the decree for.
Uh, so PFAS is a different substance than, than the solvents that they were talking about.
But you're getting solvents down into your Annabask plate too, right?
That is correct as well.
You got it.
So, so the question is. Does DEP have a standard for what's acceptable? Or sending that off into the environment? And I, I don't know the answer to that. I've, oh. Worked the network with the two people that.
That we indicated to me was that the. The equipment in there is doing what it was intended to do under the consent decree and that they were satisfied. But that doesn't mean what's, what's ending up somewhere else is a good. Is a good thing either, but they said that. They said the pumps are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing and they're satisfied that it's.
They are, and, and in fact, I, I would say, I mean, if you look at the map of the pattern of the tests. Um. It's, it's, uh, it's actually helpful. To bring water in from the. You know, the periphery of the neighborhood groundwater. Uh, that's not contaminated to people's wells. Um, whether that's the solvents or PFAS, it doesn't matter. That's a good, that's a good thing. So we don't want to turn the well off. The question is, what do you? Is there something that can be done? With what's coming out of the well? Before it goes downstream, right? That would be the question. And is there a standard for that? I don't even know if they get a standard for it. And how much money is. That's a whole nother. You know, that's like the fourth layer of the onion. Right.
And what I took from the conversation is DEP is aware of everything that's going on over there. They seem to be monitoring it. Text Tech seems to be cooperating with, with, with all of their asks. So I think that's all kind of a good thing, that everybody is aware and they're doing what they think is. What they can do at this point, so, so that's, that's at least positive in that regard.
Um, you probably, I guess you received, or, or, I received one of the. The superintendent search committee. Starting up. Anybody?
At my program.
That it starts, uh. January ten. And they have, it, it, it looks a lot more imposing, I think, and it will be. As they have flights, it's, it's like candidates. I don't know, I can't imagine.
Uh, do you want to volunteer?
I thought we were gonna volunteer Joe since.
I received a, an invitation to the governor's inauguration. Probably maybe did to everybody else. Or I did. Because you can take. Four people.
I didn't read it carefully, but I, I know that. One event you have to pay for. I think the swearing in is free.
Yeah, okay. And, uh, I didn't know if any of you guys got this. Eco vain. And it's their annual report, and it's really interesting, I thought, uh, I'd like to read it.
Sit in our mailboxes.
I don't think so. I, I don't, I don't know if they sent them to everybody. They may have just sent one to me and there's a chair, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I didn't see a whole bunch of copies of it.
Look at that.
The only thing I, 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 I didn't realize why. Husky would be here. Like what the last meeting, but now, and, and I was thinking, why was. Nothing to do. These, these are interesting things. And that, then I realized, oh, yeah, Trudy. Okay, uh, next is, anybody else have something to? Uh, next is for the comment.
I have no answer.
Uh, then the next thing on the agenda is to consider the tax-acquired property dispo. Uh, disposition. Policy.
Joe, you just want to go over your, your edits?
I was hoping, I, you know, I really don't know that this is in final form yet. But, um, one thing, um. On tax-acquired property, I suspect. We talked about, um. A lot of the taxpayers not transferred his or her interest after the recording the tax lien. So it's possible that. Possibly that someone would sell the property and, um. Subject, it would be subject to the tax lien. Um, would that person be entitled to, uh? To, um, pay the back taxes and get a municipal quick claim deed?
I think so, yeah. Yes, if that would be your intent.
Yeah.
Certainly, that, that could be the person that we. Offer it to. I mean, the lien. Lien obviously is against the, the property, not the person, so it doesn't matter who owns it, but if you wanted to make it clear that. That somebody that. You know, bought it unknowingly or unwittingly. Bought a property that was in foreclosure or, or was about to, if we could, we could offer it to them instead of the. Person who was on the, who was named on the lien.
Um, we, I also provided for taxpayers' personal representative. If that person has died and the estate is being probated. Personal representative would be able to, um. Pull me up the money and, and get that property back. We also. I, I also added spouse and domestic partner or children. And they may step into the taxpayer's shoes. And get the property that was in the family. Back into their ownership. I think there were some minor changes of. Some point the stat, the policy. Talks about a, um. Municipal officer, um, I changed that to read the select board. Uh, but I think in the definitions. They, they say that. It's in, uh, that, that the, um, definition. Municipal officers, select board of Monmetne, but. Municipal officers. So it would come to us. That would be our response. Those were the only changes.
Ever, uh, all towns.
Oh, I think the template was, you said the city bath, you know. So they have a different type of governing system, right? And there is a city council.
Yeah, they have a council, so that, their council would be the municipal officers, so the, the process would work the same, but it goes to their council instead of.
But the off, the, like, oh. Winthrop would have one, like, that's different or like this. I don't know what Winthrop has.
There it is. They're all. I guess I could say of, of the, of the six or seven that I have a hold of from different towns, they, they, they all have basically the same. Basic framework, it's just how detailed it is. Some of them are much more kind of loosey-goosey, some of them are very. Lawyer, and then others are, are, are more layman. Written, but they basically all have the same idea that the. Prior owner gets the first crack at it, even though the lien is foreclosed, and then the select board decides. Uh. Usually after some consideration about whether you actually want to sell it, you want to keep it, you want to give it to the neighbor, you know, there's all those. All those considerations because every, every property is different. Obviously, if it abuts a town park and you always wanted to expand it, you might want to just keep it. You know, tear the house down or something like that. But they all kind of go through this process. In the end, it's always back taxes, liens, fees, and then any taxes that. Would have been assessed if it would have been taxable. Right? Cause we foreclose on it as a period of time where another, another tax year might hit on April first. And usually you would make them pay in full all of that. Which would have been committed to it if it would have been taxed. So you usually try to get ahead of that tax, usually built all in. So. But the very least you're getting one for a year before it goes back in reveries again. But the process is basically the same.
What you've given us is. Like a final draft or no?
Well, I, I had hoped to go over it with you, Justin, just, just to go line by line to make sure it's okay.
I read through it. I, I, I didn't see any concerns with your, with any of your edits really. I mean, I think that's perfectly fine if you're more comfortable with it that way. I certainly don't have any concerns.
That we announce this policy.
Uh, Joe has made a motion. And Kent has seconded it to adopt the, uh. Tax acquired property disposition policy. All those in favor?
Which one of these is, they're the same. And so Justin, can you, just for the benefit of the public record, can you tell us what our next steps are now so that those. Those folks who are fighting at the, chomping at the bit, um, have an understanding of. How, how, you know, how quickly can things move?
So what, what we'll do now that, now that I have the policy is, is I'll follow the. As, as it outlines in the policy. So we'll find the ones that. We have, they're all in my office right now. So we'll just, we'll pick through a few of them and I'll bring them to you a little at a time. Cause I don't think you, you probably want to dispose of like twenty of them in one night. It's a lot of. Kind of, some of them have people in them and all that. So we'll do it a little bit at a time. And then what, um, what the policy outlines is that we give, uh, the prior owners. A certain amount of opportunity to come in and pay. And then if they don't, we'll put it out to bid and they can pay anytime up to the. Date of the bid opening, when the bid opening happens. That's it. It's going to be whatever the highest bidder is. Um, for that, and then it will come to you, uh, to make a final decision. On whether you want to dispose of it, um. Our warrant gives you the authority to dispose of property. So we don't need to go back to the taxpayers to, to ask them for each of these. So then you'll make a decision about whether you want to accept those bids and then we will, um. We'll have the lawyer draft the quick claim deed and when they come in and pay, I think they have sixty days. Pay from the time of the bid opening, they get sixty days to come in and pay it all in full. And then if they do, it's theirs. On to the next batch. And hopefully we'll get them all caught up. And then we'll try to stay on top of them every year as the policy outlines that, you know, within sixty days of the foreclosure date, I will bring all of the ones that. Don't have problems in them and I'll bring, I'll bring them to you and. This will just become an annual process that you'll, you'll deal with every year.
Can we, can we expedite the properties that have the most interest?
Sure. I know which ones those are. The, the, the one he's interested in, in his two or three others. Then there's a bunch that I have no idea whether anybody's going to want them or not, but we'll do those last.
Okay, that would be helpful. I, I recently had a case where I, it was for Gardner and, and there was a foreclosure. Uh, tax foreclosure and a person that bought from the town, from the city of Gardner. Didn't realize there was a mortgage on the property. So we had to deal, we had to deal with that mortgage. Uh, they didn't get notice of the foreclosure. So does someone do a title search? How, how does that?
Yes. So if we don't notify, that's why they're so time consuming on ones that are, that are back years. Cause we have to make sure that in the year in which it foreclosed, it could have been, some of these could be five, six, seven years. A, a, ago, we have to go into the registry and make sure that the mortgage that was in place at the time. That the mortgage, it's mortgage company and the owner was both notified. Timely and that we received either the green card back, either signed or, or refused or whatever the. Thing was, so yes, we have to check on all that.
And who does that? A paralegal, a lawyer?
No, we do it.
Do it yourself.
Yeah, we do it.
It's always been that way in town.
Typically would be the tax collector or the treasurer, depending on who's more comfortable in the town office. It's usually one of those two people. Cause technically when the lien's getting filed, the tax collector does that. So they're the ones that are supposed to send out the first notice. That there's a lien going on, they're supposed to send that to the mortgage holder and the, and the, and the owner of record. But then once, once the lien's filed, the tax collector is done. So if they're two different people. Then the treasurer then takes over from that point until foreclosure. So when the forty-five day impending foreclosure goes, technically that's the treasurer's responsibility. To make sure that that notice is sent and received.
The ladies in the office do this.
Kimberly does most of the lien filing. Yep. And Angela did some of it too. And obviously Angela wasn't there that long. So. The ones we're dealing with are people, but there's nobody there that did it. So. There's no institutional knowledge about, you know, which one of these they knew about at the time. So we have to really. Dig through our files and make sure we have all the envelopes and all that stuff. So that's why it, it just takes time. She is not involved in the collection process at all. No.
Once we. Get rid of all the old ones, hopefully going forward, having a process.
It should be much cleaner.
As OP and.
Is it really as simple as creating a calendar based on our tax due dates that will then say, you know, X amount of days. The liens need to go out, X amount of days after that, you know, a year and a half later. Forty-five day has to go in. So you can put that on a calendar. It's not very complicated. Once you, you know, once you just count it out, you can just follow that year after year. It, it's not, it's not overly burdensome as long as you have a good filing system, you'll, you, you have it there. It just becomes a, a mess when it's, and left. For a long period of time, because you don't know if everything's still in the file or who's. There's a lot of these that get to this point, right? They're, they're constantly in arrears. So there's. They get to be like this big and if they weren't put in order, then you've got, you know, you gotta dig through. You know, all these notices and all these liens and. It's just.
It's really a good idea for someone buying tax acquired property to do a title search. A really good idea. Otherwise.
It may not be yours.
I think typically I, it runs like. Three hundred dollars.
Did you?
How will the general public?
We will post it on, on the town website, but it also has to go in a, in a newspaper or, or. Something circulated in the community that we would post. You know, our, our warrant notices or, or, or any of our other legal, legal notices has to be something of that nature.
Community advertisers.
For us, it's usually the advertisers where it goes.
Um, and one other, if I can, as, are you, would you be setting a minimum bid? Are you looking for back taxes and? As minimum?
Yeah, it would be, it would be all back taxes, lien fees, interest, and then whatever. Whatever would have been assessed from the date that it foreclosed on. So some of these, if they've been foreclosed for two or three years, it would be whatever would have been assessed. On those, if it had been owned by somebody other than the town, it would.
That information will be in.
That's correct.
It would be in the, in the advertiser.
Yes.
You know, he's not publishing it. He hasn't been publishing one for a few weeks now. I don't think he's going to do one until the new year. So, uh, it's kind of intermiss. Using him. Okay.
I mean, if we have to, we, we'll, we'll have to put it in, you know, the Sun Journal or something like that. It's just, obviously it's much more expensive, but if that's, if that's the case, that's how it goes. That'll be rolled into the. The, uh, the cost of the property too. So it's really not, it's not going to come out of our, our hide in the end.
My experience with the town of Farmingdale, they set, they set a price of minimum, minimum bid. And they made some money on it, you know, they got more, um. Than just the back taxes. I suppose they. Factor in an annoyance factor, you know, and as your, your staff is doing all this work.
Right. And, and, uh. If there are multiple people interested. And you think there might be other people that are interested just besides you, then it's, it's in your best interest to, to offer what you think is the. You know, what's going to get you to win, basically. So sometimes the towns do get more money out of it than, than what is owed.
So, so minimum bid, there's a reserve, they have to bid at least this.
Right.
How would you know?
Well, we know what all the, all the, all, all costs are. Yeah, we know what all the costs are. We know how much the, the lien filing fees, the certified mail, the interest, we have all that. It's already in the computer when we. Bring up the account right now. So I could tell you what that is.
And then we would bump it up some from there.
If that's how you wanted me to proceed, yeah, we could do that.
Do we want to do that? Well, I mean, it, what you're talking about, Justin, I think. Is actual cost, but there is a cost in having your, your employees do all this work.
I agree with you. So when I bring them to you, I'll bring you the sheet. That, that, that's part of, it's part of our process that I'll bring you. The total amount that does the minimum amount do to get it out of arrears and all the fees and all, all that stuff. And then you guys can make a decision on what you want to put for those minimum prices, because I'm not going to put them out to bid until you tell me that. You want that one to go or you don't or whatever. So those will all be your choices when I bring them to you.
And, yeah, and it's not, I, I don't think it's, our former governor had some problems with. Tax acquired property where elderly people are losing their homes and, uh, um. And I, I don't think we're looking for a windfall, but. I mean, I, it's appropriate to ask for something more than just back taxes and the, uh.
There are additional rules that came of the, of the former governor's concern. So if, if it's a, if it's a home owned by somebody over the age of sixty-five and it is their homestead. There are additional rules and any amount that we make over the act taxes and fees, we have to return to that person if we sell it. That doesn't apply to vacant property or a camp or any of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so once, uh, we get the process moving. Uh, should we be expecting every week a couple of properties to look at?
That's up to you, whatever the pace is and whatever, we can get them cranked out. Of the office. Does that sound reasonable to folks? Two, three properties a week to?
What we're going to be doing budget. So you don't mind, uh, doing that, doing both?
Well, I think we're getting caught up.
Yeah.
I mean, this stuff has been.
A long time. I don't know when the last time.
I mean, I'm not adverse to spending an extra twenty minutes. Talking about this on top of whatever we need to talk about with budget. Just to, you know, clue the decks.
Do you remember the last time you've ever done this? A long time ago.
Uh, cause he was here for eleven years, but, uh, so I don't, I don't know. They're about five years.
Yeah, but I mean, when was the last time we ever did anything? I mean, when you got six pages of.
When he was here for five years was the last. After that, he said, I'm not doing this anymore.
Really? Well, let's take, let's, let's, I mean, let's try two or three of them, the most urgent ones. And, uh, see how much time it takes for us to pick through them. Maybe we can. Maybe we can get good at asking the right questions and, uh. Slicing and dicing it to the point where it doesn't take more than, you know, five or ten minutes per property to sort of.
Some of them are going to cause a lot of heartburn. Some of them are, are, are places that, you know. They've been, they're, they're mobile homes sitting on lots they own and the people are gone and they've been gone for. Ten years and we have no idea where they are. So, so, so there's not going to be anybody coming in here now after they've gotten notice after notice, you know, to. And I have to send, I'm going to send the notice to the same place that I'm aware of. Their address and they're not going to respond like they haven't for. And you're just not going to.
Those are the ones we're going to write off and say, we're not even going to go after this thing because it's going to cost us money.
Well, like one of them, for example, is, you know, is, is going to be the, the bottle redemption place in North Monmouth. You guys are going to have to sign. That's foreclosed upon, but it has a lot of stuff on that property. So it's, you know, do you want to deal with it or not?
They are, they are moving stuff.
Are they?
Going process. Someone just mentioned that to me the other day. They said IT trucks going in and out of there and they were out there cleaning snow and stuff. I don't know. Maybe you'll get enough money out of the bottles to pay the back taxes. Who knows?
Yeah, I don't know.
Do, so do you understand? Should Mr. Poleski come to our next meeting?
Uh, I don't know. Call me before next Thursday when I put it out and I'll let you know whether it's, whether it's worth it or not. I just got to go through the files and make sure we have everything.
Okay.
I'm guessing we're going to want to do this for two or three meetings. So we accumulate. Half a dozen properties. If we're going to put an advertisement out and go through the bid process and. We're not going to want to do this month after month after month.
Right.
Right, yeah.
We're going to want at least a half a dozen or more to advertise and go through all that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Why did Kurt say, I'm not going to do this today anymore?
Logistically, he went through how many town clerks, how many people changed in the front office. It, it is worse than a bear biting it into a garbage can because.
Yes.
He knows exactly what I'm talking about. It got so mind boggling what you had to go through. He just said, unless you guys ask for it, he wasn't going to do it. And I didn't blame him because. Or at that time. Everything that he brought to you, you said, no, we're not going to do that. And it just kept on going. It was, I remember the meeting well. He worked on it for weeks and then. Only one of them, one of the five or six went through. And he said, I spent so much freaking time doing it and the girls in the office and.
So why didn't we?
I don't know. That was. I said, okay.
See, we'll work into you a few at a time and you'll see, you know what, what you have to wrestle. Sometimes there are people in them. You know, so that's, so that, that's a thing too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've got a big shoulders.
Well, what we used to do for the state, so. You've seen it and done it. You know the process and what has to happen. So. I, I think the familiarity for you, it's me having a history, you know, you. It's just.
Yeah, but Dave's right, you know, it, it is a bear, you know, like when we were. You know, I was at the state, I had, I had staff that did this year ending year, we are, and they were the only people touching these carts. So like, it was consistent. They, they knew where everything was and that's not going to be the case here, you know, it's, you know, there's different people in all those positions. They all had their own filing. Methods, so it's not consistently put away the same way. So it's just. Just time consuming. We'll get through it. We'll just bring you a few at a time and, and you guys can decide what you want to do.
And then going forward that there's.
Process, hopefully.
This is how we do it. This is how we file it. So everybody knows and does it the same way.
Yeah.
You know, because that only makes sense.
So you were doing this for state owned property?
Uh, for property taxes filed in the unorganized territory.
Way up there.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's half the landmass of the state. So there's a lot of kids, there's a lot of properties up there and there's a lot of. Lot of people that live up there for various reasons. And I'm not saying all of them, but there are people that don't want to participate in government or pay taxes or whatever. So it's a con. It was a constant, you know. They live away from people for a reason. Some of them do, right? Cause they want to. They don't want to be around anybody else.
So were they sovereign citizens?
Some of them, yeah.
So what do you do?
Well. I municipal officers was the taxation committee of the legislature. So we took them to them and they had to do what you have to do. Bring them a list of. Twenty, twenty-five, thirty of them a year and they'd have to authorize us to sell them.
What happens to the people?
They, their house gets, if they're living in them, their house gets bought out from underneath them by somebody else and. It's no longer the state's issue. They become a, they become a tenant and somebody else's. I mean, that.
Our policy says that we can sell the property that's occupied and it's the buyer's responsibility to. Evict them if they want to evict them.
So how did, how did the legislature handle it?
It depend on who was on the committee at the time. Sometimes they'd tell us. You know, because people would show up sometimes and they, they, they give a, you know, a sad story about why they're, you know. and they, you know, they'd say, well, take that one off. Take it off and bring it back the next, you know, it would just keep getting put on. Never dealt with.
The VR?
Well, thank goodness, when you go into legislature, you you have to go through a. Care of that.
Can we get a medal?
We were discussing earlier about discharging water onto the street.
Oh.
Uh is there important, something in our rules of the town or that that says that you cannot do that?
Yes and no. Uh it it's, it's a policy of code enforcement officers to abide by what the planning board and the Board of Appeals would approve. So some, in some towns, um the planning board gives the codes officer a little bit more authority than another codes officer might get in another town. In the rules of the planning board, when a planning board makes a decision, there is a line that says you must maintain all the water on your own property. So therefore, when I gave a permit on questionable lots, let's say where the slopes were prevalent, um the board really said, just take care of it so it doesn't have to come to us. But I could have sent it to them uh because they would not have met that criteria without them telling the homeowner, uh no, you're gonna have to do something to provide, and then you get privacy watershed in and you get uh all those people DEP in to try to work out a solution. So I just gave them DEP number and and privacy watersheds numbers. And when they came back with a letter from them saying that it was okay, then I would issue the permit.
But there's nothing that applies to existing.
Uh I did one, I did one on Kenneback Drive that was existing uh that uh ran across the, the right of way onto somebody else's property. And I sent them a letter and said they had to clean it up and they put in a, a dry zone and and sunk it in the front lawn.
Yeah, we were discussing April Street, the new sidewalks and all the ice.
Oh, I see.
Went down through there and what?
I, I, I thought, I was hoping that in the plan for the sidewalks, there would be a, some sort of a, a rock lined on the other side of the sidewalk so that wouldn't happen. But uh yeah, it's a problem on me. And right now, I, I don't know what the solution is except for putting a septic system just for their water, their water run on which is quite a lot of money, especially when you're on sewer. Because we went through every, every channel on the Helen Melody Hall because our water runs into the sewer drain underground into the catch basin through a pipe that the sewer company uh let us do because that's where the water is gonna go. There was no way around it. You, it's either going on Main Street or in into that ditch. So we just be lined it right into it through a pipe so it wouldn't ever come to the surface. But it took a lot to get that approved.
Hey, before we, while we're on tangents, um where, where, where are we on the uh audit?
Uh we're just waiting for our KO. I think we're just waiting for our KO at this point.
Is there a chance that we could be hearing from them in the next couple of weeks or is that?
I'm not sure. I haven't heard from them this week. I can, I can, I could send an inquiry tomorrow, see.
Especially if we're starting to do the budget stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, uh we kinda need to know, like, what our financial position is in order to be giving some guidance to department heads on, like, how sharp the pencils need to be this time around.
Oh, one thing we do, we did, uh I did mention a letter from uh uh Steve O'Donnell uh about that the town needs CEO or or you know, needs a building permit.
Permit writer?
Writer, yes.
And uh I'll talk to Justin. If he, is he gonna be in tomorrow?
Yes.
Be in tomorrow?
Yeah.
Call me.
Okay.
When you're free and I'll stop in and I can do something to write permits for it.
Okay. So you don't have to search?
Well, you, you have to find us.
Yeah.
Permits for it, but you know, it's.
Calling them by that, as I've reached out to all of them that are around us to see if they could write our permits, you know, like I contacted Leeds and Wales and
Yeah.
went through, I'm just trying to get someone that'll come, you know.
And and they all bought me. Why don't you do it?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, they, but they don't, all of them don't realize I was third party inspector.
Right.
You know what? I'm writing a permit and cutting my other tail off. You, you realize that.
Right.
So I'm just.
You don't understand that. You said that to me.
You can't have a conflict of interest.
That's right, yeah.
But you, but you were doing both things.
I'm, when I was working for the town, I was doing inspections for all the permits. If the town is no longer doing inspections on the permits, so the town has to hot, have those people hire third party inspectors.
Yes.
Like Kristen did for her house.
Yeah. And it worked out beautifully.
And it, and it works.
It does.
But I'm that guy.
Yes.
There's Dave Mills and myself in the town of Bonn that are third body inspectors.
As a municipal official, you can't refer work to yourself.
So I can't, I can't.
The permanent, he really can't.
It's a, you're doing that?
No, no.
As a town employee, you can't take by the town and do all of it.
But we had a different policy then. We had a different.
I had to do them. It wasn't that they could get a third body. You couldn't get a third body inspector when I was a codes officer cuz there was a CEO. That's who did all the inspection. So you couldn't hire out. You had to use them. That's why the school had to have me go every day for a year and a half.
Yes.
It's complicated, but.
I don't get it, but.
The summer is.
Totally understand what you're saying, yeah.
Okay, so if we go on to uh our next thing on the agenda is to consider an application from TJ's place for on premise license for alcohol sales. And uh this is.
I'm recusing myself.
Recusing. Run. So and and I read through it. I don't see, it's he's, he's uh had the, the license for, forever, for a long, long time and there's never been any problems as far as I know. TJ gets that to deal with. I mean, uh oh, usually if the police chief was here, we'd ask him.
If he didn't indicate to me that he had an issue, so.
He knew this was on the agenda?
Yes.
I believe so.
Why don't we? Don't we approve the uh? I make a motion, we, we approve the application for TJ's place for an on premise license for alcohol sales.
Second. So Cat has made a motion and Joe has seconded it to prove an application from TJ's place for the, for an on premises of state license for alcohol. All those in favor? And next is uh warrant number thirteen for.
Wait, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I came late. I was in, but on public comment, can I go back to ask one question?
Yeah.
Is there a way that Justin or or Dan or somebody can get ahold of privacy watershed and find out what can be done with the water levels of Cognawannon? It's eighteen inches over. It's over all the rip wrap that friends of Cogsey put in for free. For all these people, the water is over the top of the rip wrap and it's gonna destroy it. And now the ice is on it, but if you can somehow drain the water a little bit, the ice will settle back down to the water.
No, the lake is too low. Now the lake is too high.
And they put this.
It's open as far as.
Really? I'm not sure if it is or not. I, I'm just asking the question, is there a way?
Yeah, I'll call, I'll, I'll call it.
Can we, can we pull the bandaid out?
Lot of water coming down behind my house. A lot of water. I mean, it is roaring.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Be snowpack, right?
No, it is. I mean, and then I, I know when the lake is high, that dam is open cuz I can hear it from inside my house how much water's coming in.
It was just a question. I didn't know.
They're supposed to run this weekend.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Next week.
So.
Next week. No snow.
It's full, full up. I mean, that's. I could, I should have left my doc in.
Problem dam that you guys, that out of Escocas.
Well, they couldn't, uh, yeah, I mean, eh they could only get three boards out cuz the water level never got low enough to grab the next three boards.
I know the dam over on Tacoma, all four gates have been wide open for a week. Water's just. Cuz there's no ice because of creating such a thing if there's no ice.
Oh, yeah. Lots of moving water, wide open and and no snowpack. Yeah, I don't know about, I think they have a little bit better control of Cogsey where they can do larger releases of water faster.
Faster.
Yeah.
And you.
And about Bessa Cook, uh Lake Improvement Association, Mill Foil Inspections, fifteen hundred dollars, Exxon Enterprises. These are for the um Tasers, fifteen hundred and eighty-three dollars. Angor Savings Bank, four thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. These are various charges to the uh credit card. Most of it is computers for the front office. Bernstein Shore Legal Advice, one thousand forty-one. Uh Barry Talbot Royer Business Services and Assisting with the Audit, seven thousand two hundred and twenty-two. Bluework, Blue Rock Earthworks, Materials Transport Transfer Station, twenty-two seventy-two. Central Main Power, the Streetlight Purchase, fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety. Usano Inc. Wood Removal, seven thousand five hundred and sixty-three. Baby and Oil Heating Fuel, one thousand seven hundred and nine. Primal Industries Demo Removal, five thousand six hundred and fifty-one. Rochelle Consulting, three months worth of um her work, three thousand five hundred and twenty-five. Main Technology Group, six thousand six hundred and ninety-four. Main Waste to Energy Tipping Fees, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-four. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, two thousand six forty-two. That's fire truck maintenance, generally speaking. Runyon Kirsten Willeck, that's the audit, six thousand seven hundred and fifty. State of Maine BMB, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-one. And Stanley Walker, one thousand seventy-seven dollars for a grand total. Uh oh, that's for um snow removal and stuff at the North Fire Station. Um and uh where am I here? The total is one thou, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars fifty-seven cents.
What the U V S was the uh transfer station?
Did I skip one?
Did you skip one? If that, buy those uh stickers, this uh about twelve hundred dollars.
Oh, okay. I missed that one. That's more than I thought too. Yes, it's.
Are they giving them out again?
Yes.
There, there was a little issue we had. Uh we found out, wanna take care of this before we talk about that.
I make a motion, we approve warrant number seventeen for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. There we go.
So Cat made a motion and Mark seconded it to approve uh the warrant number thirteen for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. All those in favor?
So we discovered that the stickers for the transfer station got ordered, but the adhesive is on the backside, so they stick on the outside of your car.
I don't, I don't, I don't know whether that was because the order was placed that way or if it's a mistake. I haven't had a chance to talk to Dan, but we just figured it out like yesterday late afternoon. They came in, we piled them in the drawer and the girls started handing them, I don't, I don't mean to call them across the window, but the ladies out front.
The staff.
The staff. They started handing them out and they, then they realized, they brought it to my attention that the sticker is on, is on the back. And I don't know whether there's a reason for that or whether they were ordered wrong, whatever. I gotta, I gotta, I have to ask Dan. I don't know the answer. Whether that was done intentionally or what.
And the transfer station sticker saga continues.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I was there this afternoon and they were giving out uh, someone was registering a car and they gave out a, a permit, a, a permit.
Card?
Yeah.
What is that?
The old fashioned one.
Once we got, we, we didn't get the stickers till like last Thursday, so was it before that?
It was today. I was there.
They shouldn't be given, I threw them all away the other day, so I'm not sure where they found it.
Oh.
Secret stash.
Huh?
It's a secret stash.
Well, well, when I was going through the drawer where these went, we had some going back to like two thousand thirteen. So I said, all right. So I, my OCD took over and I, I hauled that whole drawer out and I filled the whole trash can full of, full of these things. So they, they shouldn't exist. And if they do, I will, I will. Okay, I will, I will check and I will ask, but they shouldn't exist in the building.
So the question came up, do we order new ones that adhere to the inside of the glass? Um or do we just run with this and?
I'm sticking it to a piece of plexiglass. Doesn't matter to me.
How are they usually done? I mean.
Usually on the inside.
So why did the lady or whoever did it, uh Diane? She did that one.
I think it really depends on on where you wanna put them. Cuz as I recall, like the, the dump stickers in Belgrade are required to be on your rear window. So I think it's not as big of a deal if it's on the inside back there, but I think here, there, I think the transfer station is looking for them to be like on the, either the right window and on the front or on the windshield. And if it's on the windshield, you know, people tend to scrape the winter and stuff, so they may get ruined.
It's sort of.
I mean, we could potentially just deal with them. There's no free stuff with them and we're not really tracking who they're going to other than they have to have a valid registration. So if they ruin them, it does nothing that's gonna stop them from just coming in and grabbing another one cuz there's no, there's no real value to them anymore like there were with those cards. So.
They can put it outside, window, weather goes up and down. Either way.
Right, either way on that, right? Cuz it's gonna hit on the inside or the outside.
From three seventies and had that little vent window.
Yeah.
BW fun.
Yep.
That I agree.
I'll try to figure out what the, you know, what the intent was and whether it's gonna work. And if it's not, maybe just order more. We'll see.
We want a, a upcoming brand one, piece of plexiglass.
Yeah, I've got a bunch of plexiglass. Uh you want a piece of plexiglass?
Justin, could you ask, uh, I think maybe the right person to do this would be uh our economic development person, uh because she's um got a relationship with the cabin masters. And uh I think they're supposed to have closed on their property by now. So can we invite them to our next meeting?
We can certainly ask if they want to come.
Yeah.
They will.
Yeah.
I'm doing two jobs for them now.
Yeah, let's invite them to our next meeting and welcome them to the neighborhood and ask them what we might be able to be helpful.
They're gonna deliver it.
They're taking over the town's property.
Yeah.
Executive session.
Good night. Happy New Year.
Justin gave me a call.
Yeah.
I'll be home.
Make a motion, we uh enter into executive session. Pursuant to one MRSA section six eight personnel.
Second. That was a motion by Cat, seconded by Joe to uh go into executive session. Uh all those in favor?